Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Fort Thomas City Planning Commission for Wednesday, February 21st. This evening on the agenda, we have a review of the zoning ordinance, Article Five, which is the regulations that apply to all the zoning districts. You can speak here.
Not well, not at this moment.
I was just gonna make an announcement.
How long does it take three hours again?
Well, we're just gonna review the minutes and then we'll then we'll get into it.
Eight minutes would be great.
With that alternative to Kevin. Do you have any introductory remarks?
Um, the, the, um, the, I'm sorry. I did want to talk, have Frank. There was a couple of folks that had some trouble finding stuff on the website. So we wanted to put it up here and kind of show people, walk, walk you through where to find everything. Uh, if you go under, uh, on our website, this is the main page. You go under government, um, you go under boards and commissions, and then follow that down to planning commission, uh, and there's everything. Everything we can talk about, the very bottom is the most recent. Going down the C toward the bottom, the most recent presentation from last night, and then even before that, the phase two and phase three, uh, regulations. But I still periodically get a call on it, and I just wanted to kind of show everybody, um, you know, how it is we get there.
Thank you. Thank God.
There's actually a second page.
There was, there's a couple of links, like if you go into general services page, just a generic page, right there across there's a link. So we've kind of guided in a few spots to where it'll get you there. Um, so if you have any questions on that, don't hesitate to reach out to the city to us. We'll, we'll guide you, guide you to that spot. Thank you.
Next up, we have a review of the minutes from our January 2024 meeting.
This is David. Can I request one change today that I noticed?
Sure.
Um, on the minutes, it basically says that, uh, from the minutes of November, that it carried six to zero. There were six of us here. I abstained at that point in time because I wasn't here November. So just to make that one adjustment.
Were there any comments on the January meeting? Can I make a move? A motion will be approved. Should we have a motion in the second for approval of the January and November meeting minutes with the provision request by David? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess it's up to you. I mean, we had a request to hold comment. I don't know if we want to do that initially, and we obviously, um, we'd like to keep it to the, the matters than art five, if we could. Um, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to entertain that now.
Okay. If anybody from the public wishes to speak, go ahead.
John Ferris.
Can I push the button there in the front? It turns green. There you go.
John Ferris, 66 Bernie Lane. I came here tonight with the heaviest of hearts. Over the past three plus years, I've attended many meetings of most every appointed board and the elected city council. I've heard things I thought were reasonable and things that weren't. But I guarantee you that nothing prepared me for the words that I heard at last night's combined meeting of the zoning commission and city council. The discussion was related to Midway Court. Mandates were suggested and comments were made, not by Midway residents, mind you, but by the powers that be in our town. But none cut me to the core of my being more than when I heard essentially that these people on Midway will be passing away and the city could buy up these properties so they could be leveled to make a parking lot. Translation, do what you want with the zoning tonight. The people will die off and the city can get the property. Being immune to zoning regulations, which Lisa pointed out, the city could then do as they please, level the homes for a parking lot. I understand differing opinions. I understand compromise. I understand resolving differences to arrive at reasonable solutions to problems. What I cannot understand and will never understand is sinking to the lowest level of depravity as to suggest just waiting until the residents on a street dies so this group can execute its grand plans for their vision of utopia. What has come of humanity? I ask you, what has come of humanity? And the words were spoken in the very presence of several residents of Midway Court. They came to hear what plans were being made for their future, future. I'm betting they didn't expect to hear, they don't need to worry about it. They'll be dead here soon anyway. Several of you have asked that I not attend your meeting. Sadly, at this point, I feel no other choice but to attend, if only listen to, only to listen to hear Bernie Lane is on the death watch list. I surely don't want my number to be up quite yet, but you can't argue with my being curious to hear if the clock is ticking. This is a shameful time in Fort Thomas. These words have been approved by the planning attorney. For listening to the video. Thank you.
Does anybody else have comment?
I do.
Sharon Upnight, 62 Miller Lane. Thank you all for your service and your time. It's greatly appreciated. Um, my comments are about last night too. And, um, and I emailed you all this letter that I sent that I wrote, and I didn't know if you had time to read it or not. Did any of you have any time to read the letter that I sent? Do you guys have any input on this? Because during last night's special joint meeting between the city council, I'll just read it, and the planning commissioners, there was a discussion regarding zone code updates related to Midway Court. The agenda for the meeting simply stated the future of Midway Court. That's all it said on the agenda. And I know you guys aren't, it's not your job to write this, but it, it, it just seemed a little alarming when I read it. Um, so, and it says, items or purpose for this meeting, without providing any further information, I had the opportunity to speak with some of the residents living on Midway Court as they were sitting behind me, and they informed me that none of the six homeowners were notified or informed about this matter in any way. They found out about this meeting because I posted it on a Facebook page that I'm a member of, and that's how they found out about the meeting. It's baffling to me that the city didn't make any effort to inform the six homeowners about these crucial zoning changes that directly impact their street. Gathering their input beforehand should be a priority as it is essential for making informed decisions that serve the community effectively. Imagine seeing the future of your street on an agenda without any prior knowledge or input. It's certainly not conducive to fostering trust or collaboration. In my opinion, the current approach to these code changes where modifications are made before seeking community input seems counterproductive and not in the best interest of the residents. It's crucial to prioritize community input from the residents at, on the outset to ensure that any proposal changes accurately reflects in the needs and preferences of the people they affect. The proactive approach fosters transparency, trust, and collaboration, ultimately leading to decisions that better serve the community as a whole. That's why I respectfully asking that the plan commission to conduct a thorough review of the existing comprehensive plan before proceeding with any further proposed zone code changes. Um, this review is mandated by law, as you know, and occur at least once every five years as outlined in KRS 100, um, 1972. The purpose of these periodic reviews is to assess any advancements or changes in social, economic, technical, and physical aspects within the community according to KRS 100.1971. The plan commission must hold a public hearing before amending or re-doctoring plan elements as part of this before amending or re-adopting plan elements. Um, I think it's crucial for the commission to evaluate the validity of the original research. If the commission determines that the original research remains valid, no additional research is, you know, requested. And so, once the review and revisions of the comprehensive plan are completed and any necessary updates or changes to the zone codes are identified, I propose breaking down the implementation process into more manageable bite-sized pieces, stages. One effective approach could be addressing one zone at a time. This method allows for thorough consideration and ensures that each zone receives the attention it deserves. Furthermore, it's essential to prioritize proper notification to the community members who may be directly affected by the proposed zoning changes, especially those related to land use. By providing clear and timely communication, we can engage residents in the decision-making process and ensure that their input is considered. Ultimately, these efforts should aim to align the proposed changes with the best interest, safety, and overall quality of life of the community. I appreciate your service, but to me, this seems a little backwards, and I'd like to hear your input, how you guys would like to see this done.
So a couple of things.
Thank you.
So last night's joint meeting, there was, there was, it was for discussion purposes only. So whenever we actually vote to implement any zone changes, and this isn't just for this zone update, but anytime we are changing zoning in the city, a zoning district that would affect a property owner, the property owners need to be notified. And that will happen when we get to that point where we've decided what is the language that's going to be voted on and where are we changing those own districts. But that hasn't happened yet.
Do you feel your input would be valuable at this stage? To me, I think.
Yes, yeah. I'm not saying that their input's not valuable. What I'm saying, that notification isn't required until we get to that point. And when we get to that point, that will occur. Each individual property owner will be notified at that point.
Yeah, but don't you think, I'm just saying, if I saw this about the future of Miller Lane, I'd be a little upset. Um, who, who do you go to to ask for these people to, um, like properly be mailed out? I mean, I don't know how this is another thing.
The notifications would be mailed to the individual property owner.
I mean, to get their input. I mean, to get their input on how, how they would see the direction. And it's not, it's not my street. Like, to me, you'd think you'd want their input. And that's what I'm asking. I want your input.
And it will happen. And like I said, it happens at any zone change for anywhere in the city, not just Midway Court, obviously.
Yeah, that, that's hard to sit in the audience and these people.
You notify the people that are affected by the zoning change and the letting property owners technically when you have a zone change. So that will occur at some point in the future.
I mean, do you think it would be a good thing at this point to review the comprehensive plan and get the community input?
So I'll defer that to the, I mean, that's, that's a council and a city decision.
Um, I think there's been a decision made that we're going to move forward. You've got to keep in mind that this zoning review really began, I think, back in 19? It was definitely.
Might be 20, 1920.
Kind of right prior to COVID. Um, it's been delayed due to COVID. It's been delayed due to elections. It's been delayed due to what I believe to be a really diligent effort by the city to, uh, bring everybody into the fold and hear what was going on. It's, uh, a lot of time, effort, and money has been spent on that. During that time, has the comp plan, uh, come, gone beyond the five years? Yes. But it's because it was started and a number of things have delayed it. I can tell you, I've done the research. The, it is not invalid. Uh, I heard councilmen continue to say it's illegal. Our zoning is illegal. It's simply not. There are two cases, Graves versus Lexington Fayette, the development company versus Lexington Fayette, that both indicate that, uh, it's, it's not invalid to continue on the zoning without the comp plan being reviewed. In, in the way that we have typically worked and prior to when I was here, uh, there was a pretty regular review of that comp plan because of the fact that we started this review process and so many things beyond the control, uh, have hit. Yes, it's a little out of, out of whack right now. But I think the decision's been made, uh, with my input, the input beyond my control as well, beyond my pay grade, that, uh, that this matter is moving on.
Um, Tim, the, the completed comprehensive plan was December of 2018. So the review would have been needed to be done by the fifth year, which would have been the, the December of 23. So since then, you did have COVID. You weren't having really in-person meetings. You weren't getting the feedback and the input from people. And things have changed, and that's why I think it's of the utmost importance that we do the review process. If you have reviewed it, can I see what's been updated from the original one? Because I don't know where to find that.
First of all, I hear your opinion. I respect it. Um, but are you asking me if there's been an update or the?
Was there a revision? You said you reviewed it in 2019, but it doesn't need to be reviewed within one year.
What I said was the review process of our zoning ordinance began in 19.
Gotcha. Okay. And so I'm talking about the comprehensive plan.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you. That's why I was confused. But, but what I'm asking, since this board that's under there, I take it it's up to you to say, hey, let's do a revision. Let's go forward with a new, you know, see if we need to improve on these and then ask for the input from the community.
I think the decision's been made to move forward.
By who? I mean, who? I, I never got that memo. That's all I'm saying, Tim. I missed this memo.
By Matt, the mayor, uh, this board. We're, we're moving forward now. And, uh, for the reasons I just explained to you, that the process started in 19, a lot of time, effort, and money has been spent. I know you don't like that answer, but that's the answer.
Well, I, I don't understand the answer at all, sweetie. I mean, I mean, to me, a review, you would sit down with the people, get their input. Do we need this? We do that with the community, and then you go from there. Am I missing something there?
I understand what you're saying. I, I, I think I hear you. You hear me. Um, I don't.
I don't understand, Tim, that's all. I don't understand what this 2019 means.
In 2019, the review process of the zoning ordinance began. It was ongoing for quite some time. It was delayed, uh, to a great extent because we wanted to take, we were asked to take a break, uh, at some point by the community. We, we've done everything we can to go ahead.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I could just hold the chat. We're trying to move forward right now in an, in an effort to keep this thing moving forward because we spent a lot of time, effort, money. It needs to get done. And then after that, the comprehensive plan will be reviewed.
What is this thing we're getting for? I, I mean, to me, if you want to have a zoning code update to reflect the quality and the well-being of the community, don't you feel like it would be important to get their input right now? So, or input on that?
I think we've been getting input for three years now.
One, one thing, I think, one thing I would like to make clear, like for this evening where we're doing the general, uh, conditions that apply to all zoning districts, none of that is incumbent on the comprehensive plan. The, the comprehensive plan does not inform all of the content of the zoning code. It only informs portions of it, particularly the land use, transportation, and public facilities. But these controls over accessory structures, the general conditions for signage, none of that is part of the comprehensive plan. So you have to understand.
Oh, this part, I did.
A large portion of this process doesn't have anything to do with the comprehensive plan. So I just want to make that clear.
No, I understand that, but the land use is a big deal and.
Which, which we'll be discussing next month, but we're not discussing this evening.
Okay. But thank you for letting me talk because that, that's very concerning when you see something like that on the agenda and the people have no idea what's going on. So thank you for your time. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having Frank and I.
I have a party comment, and I am leaving, so that'll make everybody happy. Um, I would suggest this to the board, not just this one to others. When you review these tapes, and I hope you do watch them, some of them might watch five, six, seven times. You should really look at your expressions. When you're laughing, when people are objecting, and you're smiling, you're smirking, it, it does not instill trust. It, it instills lines that are drawn. They're, they're clearly been drawn. But I would watch, I would, I would try to keep the, I know you asked for the chatter to stop, and I agree with that. I think this marketing should stop as well.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having Frank and I. For this evening, we should continue our discussion of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance update. Tonight, we will quickly run through the zoning ordinance update process. We will review, um, eight draft zoning ordinance sections. All of these sections are the zoning ordinance entitled Regulations Applicable to All Districts. I will be highlighting only the significant changes from phase two or those topics during phase two that we say we need more discussion. And we will end with next steps. If we don't get through all the sections tonight, we will continue this discussion at the planning commission in April. And I will stop several times during this presentation to answer questions and to get some creative notes. The zoning ordinance update process, update process is progressing in roughly four stages. In the first phase, included an analysis of existing conditions as well as a thorough examination of your existing zoning and subdivision ordinance. At the end of that phase, we produce a diagnostic report, which is currently on the city's website. In phase two, we created the revised regulations, and the major changes from your current code were fleshed out. We concluded phase two in September of, of 2023, and all of the phase two drafts were compiled into a single document and are available on the city's website where Frank showed you earlier. This phase two draft shows how the updated regulations differ from the city's existing regulations. In phase three, which is where we are tonight, we will complete all of the amendments and align the zoning map with any new zoning districts, and we anticipate a restart of this process in January. Phase four includes the adoption of a new zoning code, the new subdivision ordinance, which we are calling a unified development ordinance, and the new zoning map. On Thursdays after the planning commission meeting, we hold coffees and conversations at Fort Thomas Coffee from 10 to 11:45 and from 6 to 8 p.m. Please feel free to drop in anytime during those hours at the planning commission meeting the following month. I report out to the planning commission what we've heard and any questions that were raised by community members who attended. At the public sessions in January, approximately 12 community members attended, and we discussed, uh, most directly the Tower Park Historic District that is being proposed. The topics of discussion were the appropriateness of including Green Street in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District, the suitability of using the U.S. Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation to evaluate alterations in the Tower Park District, and then the failure to repair subsection that is also in the historic overlay for Tower Park. We also discussed the need for more direct community engagement that targets specific sections of the zoning ordinance as well as specific neighborhoods. And then we also touched on waivers and modifications and equivalency, and we spent some time talking about the difference between waivers and, and, um, variables. We also discussed the performance standards in UDO, particularly the noise controls. As I mentioned previously, all the sections we will be discussing tonight are in the article entitled Regulations Applicable to All Districts. We will start with section five that explains how to handle unique situations, the administration of zoning ordinance, and much of this section was imported from your existing zoning ordinance with only minor changes. During phase two, we added a section that deals with performance standards that covers objectionable impacts from various land uses. And then in phase three, we also included and imported your existing provisions for erosion, hillside slippage, and segmentation control. And then we also added provisions requiring developments to meet the applicable standards in the subdivision ordinance for improvements. Today, the zoning ordinance indirectly includes performance standards. And as I said, during phase two, we added this section to explicitly, um, review and have standards for the external impacts for things such as noise, vibrations, smoke, or others and such. And but please keep in mind that some of these negative impacts are also covered by the city's nuisance controls. The subsection on erosion and sediment control and hillside slippage, as I said, is new to phase three, but it really does incorporate all of the existing standards in your ordinance. These provisions require demonstration for compliance with sedation District One requirements and installation of permanent construction and related measures to control stormwater runoff. The provisions also explicitly state that construction site will be subject to inspections by the city to ensure the appropriate erosion and sediment control measures are in place and are properly maintained during construction. The subsection on required improvements for developments is also new for phase three, and we included the subsection to explicitly require that the streets, sidewalks, stormwater runoff controls, and fire flows meet the applicable sections of the subdivision ordinance. Section 5.1 pulls together the accessory and temporary use regulations that are currently throughout zoning ordinance. We talked about a few provisions, but many of the existing regulations are basically unchanged. In phase two, we did add standards for outdoor dining, storage, sales, um, and also accessory dwelling units. During phase one and phase two, we talked about accessory dwelling units at length. Accessory dwelling units are self-contained, smaller secondary dwelling units located on the same lot as the larger principal dwelling that contains a living room, a bedroom space, a kitchen, and a bathroom. They can be internal to the home, such as a converted attic space that can be attached to the home, or they can be detached. In past years, accessory dwelling units were often called granny flats or in-law suites. This illustration shows the various ways that accessory dwelling units can be accommodated on lot with the principal dwelling. The upper left-hand graphic shows a detached unit. Next to that is an attached ADU. The other graphics also show accessory dwelling units that are attached to the principal dwelling or converted space within the home or above an attached garage. When we talked about accessory dwelling units during phase one and two, detached ADUs were not desired. Instead, integrated ADUs were more acceptable to this board. Integrated ADUs would be those that are either attached to the house in some way or interiors of the house and things like basements or attics. As the ADU regulations are currently written, integrated ADUs would be permitted by right in all of the R1 and the R2 districts. And the R2 district is the two-family residential district. The draft language included in section 5.1 requires ADUs to be located on a performing lot. So what that means, if a lot is too narrow or it's too small in terms of its area, an ADU would not be allowed. Detached ADUs are prohibited. Integrated ADUs must comply with the principal building setbacks unless an existing building that is non-performing is converted to an ADU, in which that would be permitted. Only one ADU is allowed on the lot, and the size is limited to 40% of the area of the principal dwelling or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. There are additional design regulations for ADUs as well. Exterior stairs that, that access the ADU may not be located on the front of the home. Any additions to an accommodated ADU must be compatible with the existing home. Location and design of any exterior doors must be located and designed in a manner typical for a single-family home. And any additions to accommodated ADU must not exceed the height of the existing home. The ADU and the principal dwelling must share a driveway. Based on the discussions that we had during phase two, we have removed the requirement that an ADU must have a parking space. And the phase three draft does not require that parking space for the ADU. Just to be very clear about that, because that was a large item of discussion. We were here before during phase two. In phase two, we also discussed the sharing and splitting of utilities between the ADU and the principal dwelling. Based on those discussions, the phase two language was. Based on those discussions, the Phase Two language was revised to require that the ADU and the principal dwelling share utilities. Any questions or concerns about ADUs? Did I get everything that you were concerned about during Phase Two? During Phase Two, we also had a very lengthy discussion about the definition of home occupation, and the discussion centered on ensuring that the definition included work from home employees, not just business owners that operate out of their home. What you see on the screen is the existing and proposed definitions. Proposed definitions references an occupation rather than a business in order to capture work from home employees. The zoning ordinance currently has standards for home occupation, which are retained in the Phase Three draft, and these include no outside employees, only people residing in the home, they work in the home occupation. The square footage of the home devoted to the home occupation is limited by your regulations. The exterior of the home may not be altered, and outside storage is prohibited, and accessory structures may not be used for home occupations. Regulations for home occupations also include a prohibition in selling goods directly from the home, and sales are limited to online sales. A limitation on the amount and type of traffic generated by the home occupation is also included. And during Phase Two, we also discussed that potential impacts from home occupations were concerning. So as a result, I added a specific reference to the performance standards in Section 5.0 in order for it to be clear for anyone who's researching home occupation. Also, in Phase Two, I talked about occupational taxes, and said people should be aware of that. So that is now also shown in the Phase Three draft. And then in addition to that, there was concerns about how much business activity would be coming and going. So we have added a standard that says that businesses have to take care of, has to be conducted electronically or by appointment to prohibit walk-in businesses. Any concerns? Hearing none.
This is David.
Yes.
Now, I guess the points that you made, the one that did have a question on it is you all had decided there'd be no goods or products sold directly from the premises in connection with such home occupation.
Correct.
Okay. What was it? Can I ask the planning commission what their intent on that was? Is there a necessary reason for that? Because we talked about people coming back and forth to the home anyways, right? Like whether or not they're maybe this massage therapist. I'm trying to think, what, you come to a house for maybe consulting services, you know?
I think the thought, you all come in as well. I think the thought that we were discussing is our cause. You know, we don't want somebody to be distributing products, that they're selling stuff online out of their house. You have UPS drivers coming every hour to pick up stuff, or Amazon people, or general public just to come and, you know, you're not making deliveries all day long or transporting product all day long. That was kind of the intent.
Changing the field of kind of a home.
You don't want it to be a retail location essentially from your house.
And the other question I had as far as storing materials, I think we mentioned they can't store it in their garage or exterior to their home.
Correct. They have no outside storage, and it can't be stored in the accessory structure. And that is your existing regulation.
Yeah.
We talked a little bit about that during Phase Two as to whether it's potentially to allow someone to store things in their garage. And my understanding is that that place we should want to retain those.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I had about, and I guess kind of, once they provide you like small edits, you know what I mean? Like, for instance, you guys say heated and ventilated and thereby habitable rooms, such as basements. But a basement in Fort Thomas that's below 7 feet can't be habitable space, you know what I mean? I think we're providing definitions that aren't necessarily accurate. So is there small textual changes? Can I just provide them to you and then?
Yes, just email them.
And you can look.
Yeah, you can just email them to me.
Okay, thank you.
But there is a definition for habitable space.
Correct. Thank you. Another question, one final question, sorry.
Sure.
Is it really our business to be concerned about how much electricity or water they use? I mean, in a sense of, you know, I would think Duke Energy would not really, you know, would like to make more. And we could also include the assessment they give from the 2% or 5%. So I'm just thinking like, I can see from a water, even with water and wastewater, it doesn't seem to be an issue. If it's not causing an issue in the utility system.
Well, I guess, you know, we didn't want anybody to go bitcoin mining out of their house and have to put a new substation across the street and, you know, something along those lines.
Sure.
You know, I know that's kind of an extreme case, but I think the thought was we didn't want to have to require a utility contractor to accommodate somebody's home occupation. Not necessarily how much they're using, but you know, whether it be at a residential level or not beyond that. You know, you work weld, you know, you didn't have a bunch of welders, you have, you know, a lot of current drawing into your house.
And I think it's quite honestly, it'll be kind of difficult. I mean, it'll be pretty self-evident. I mean, you guys are going to be chilling us anyways, let's be honest, right? Unless there's an issue. So, okay, I see your point. Okay. All right, thank you.
And that regulation is actually currently in the code.
Sure, thank you.
I've done a lot of these regulations, and this is the first one I've ever seen that one.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? The city's existing regulations for short-term rentals, which are things like Airbnb and VRBO, were created in 2021, and additional policy considerations are needed after working with these regulations over the last few years. If the planning commission agrees, we would like to defer those policy discussions until we discuss the building districts in March. It may be necessary to tailor the short-term regulations to specific zoning districts, since that would be an appropriate timing to do that. Is everyone okay with that? So we'll be moving on to accessory structures at this point. In the Phase Two and Phase Three drafts, we retained most of the existing regulations for accessory structures and buildings, including prohibiting doing in the front yard. Accessory buildings and structures must be incidental to the principal permitted use and locating a minimum five feet of the rear property line and the side property lines. If the building is less than 600 square feet, larger accessory buildings have to go to the board of adjustment to be placed inside yard. And again, that's pretty much your existing regulations. The current accessory structure regulations limit the size of detached garages to four motor vehicles, but this regulation lacks specificity. So when I was talking to Kevin and Mark, we drafted these regulations that limit the percentage of the rear yard covered by accessory structures and buildings to 70% and limits the number of accessory structures and buildings to two excluding play equipment. As Kevin and Mark and I continue to discuss this, we discussed customizing the maximum rear yard coverage by accessory buildings by zoning districts, because there's a large difference in the minimum lot area for these residential districts. And as you can see in the chart, the things that are in parentheses are the minimum lot areas in those zoning districts. So consequently, I created this chart that reduces the amount of the rear yard that may be covered by accessory buildings and structures as the minimum lot size increases. What do you think? Is this a more workable approach as opposed to just having a, you know, no more than 70% may be covered, which may work fine in R1C, but may not be appropriate in R1AA, which has a minimum lot area of an acre?
I think it makes sense. If you have a one acre lot, you still can cover it with 70%. You could end up with a 30,000 square foot building down there.
And we can continue to tweak the numbers, and I'll work with Kevin and Mark to do that. If you're basically okay with your approach, we'll, okay, awesome. Also, when Kevin and Mark and I discussed these changes in terms of limiting the number of accessory buildings and structures to two in the rear, Kevin and Mark were concerned that this regulation was too restrictive. Alternatively, we would replace the revision shown on the screen, which expands the number of accessory structures and buildings permitted in the rear yard, while still maintaining the maximum lot coverage in the rear yard for accessory buildings and structures. So essentially, what this does is say that you can have two accessory buildings in the rear yard, one of which must be less than 200 square feet. You're allowed to have one private outdoor swimming pool, believe it or not, there is a definition for that. One fence, and then one other accessory structure. So this is not quite as restrictive as what I had initially proposed. I just wanted to see if y'all were okay with that. Any concerns with?
Yeah, I guess I wasn't clear that we were considering a yard fence as an accessory structure.
It is a structure, yes. The fence is a structure.
It's not a habitable structure.
No, but it is a structure. Anything with location on the ground is defined as a structure.
What about retaining wall?
Well, we have one other accessory structure, which in my mind, I was thinking about it as a gazebo or something. But a retaining wall is also a structure.
Because I know every house reminds somebody who has a retaining wall in their garden.
Right. And if they have a retaining wall, they shouldn't be.
And I have a shed, and I have a basketball.
So these are things that we need to make sure we're not.
I don't think most people would consider a retaining wall as an accessory structure because it's necessary potentially to have a de rest in your house.
Right. But technically, it is an accessory structure.
I understand physically it might be.
Yes. So we need to.
But it's not really an accessory.
Right.
Yeah, I was thinking like hot tub. You know, I've got, I think, two, what do you call them, large fire places out back. You know, I, what do you call a shed, a pool back there. I also have my garages detached. It's actually sort of like, I don't see how it's stored, but.
Okay. So we need to go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll come back.
Was the purpose here really to start, like, I don't want to have big garages more than four cars?
So that was the purpose for the 70% rule that we were just talking about. This, truthfully, is an issue where we have some places in the community where they have four sheds in the backyard that aren't necessarily being well-maintained, as well as a fence, as well as a detached garage. And it starts to appear junky. And so this is much more to deal with enforcement issues than, and have language that would allow Kevin and Mark to go out there and say, you need to get rid of, you know, a couple of these sheds.
Well, is it possible, just to be very specific, we don't want you to have more than one shed? You know what I mean?
We could certainly be more specific. I mean, what we, you know, when talking to Kevin and Mark about it, they were saying, you know, most of the sheds are about 16 by.
Six, uh, 20 by 16.
20 by 16, yeah, something like that.
16 by 12 is kind of that threshold where you're under 200 square feet.
Yes.
Not regulated by the building code. So most of them in Fort Thomas, we have smaller yards, they're under 200 square feet.
So we need to go back to the drawing board and make sure that we can meet both goals, right? So if you have a retaining wall and a gazebo and a fire pit and all of that, you know, you're still allowed to do that. But the fact, once you start having, because typically what happens is people are storing things in these sheds, and there's four of them, and it starts to look junky.
Well, that sounds like a, you know, a compliance issue, obviously, and, you know, what do you call codes? But obviously, writing codes.
It has to be, so we need something in the code that can hopefully have a happy medium between enforcement and then allow people to enjoy their backyards.
Yeah, I hate for a person to have a really, you know, beautiful backyard, but you're like, sorry, you got too many, you can't add that fire pit. Like, wait, this is, I mean, I'm paying my taxes, I got a beautiful lawn or a beautiful area, it doesn't look bad. What's the problem?
Yeah, and to go back to my retaining wall example there, okay, I got two retaining walls in my front yard. So those accessory structures that are not allowed in my front yard.
It might make sense to differentiate between buildings and structures, because some lots, you're going to have to have a couple of retaining walls.
Yeah.
Maybe if we focus on buildings.
We can, we certainly can do that. And again, we have situations where people have built fences, you know, a fence is dilapidated, and then rather than tear it down, they just build another fence in front of it.
But I guess Kevin, for like a fence, isn't that subject to building permit?
Uh, yeah. Well, zoning permit, but it's not truly regulated by the building code unless it's over a certain height, something like that.
But I mean, can you, I mean, I guess from a regulatory standpoint, if you look at your example, we have a fence and a fence next to the fence, you know, could that be prohibited, I guess, where you have to have a de rest on either side of one fence? You can't have, you know, limited space between fences. Something, you know, something that's not a zoning thing, but a building regulation for a fence.
I mean, so that's a challenge. We always talk to folks when they request a permit, for those situations where there's already a fence, like, are you tying to that existing fence? Where is the existing fence, you know, on your neighbor's fence? And usually pull them off the idea of, honestly, I tell folks, put it two foot off your line or put it up to the line, because as soon as you put it six inches off, your neighbor puts it six inches off, you have a dead zone in there. So I usually encourage folks, I can't require it, at least at this point, to say, hey, you need to be up to the property line or give yourself some space so you can maintain between them. But if you would like us to go beyond that, I don't know if that's.
Or you have it as a separate, maybe we have a separate argument about fences. As in walls.
Yeah, fences and walls. Yeah. I mean, that's the issue.
Separately from accessory structures.
All right, we'll go back to the drawing board.
Well, you want to limit like the number of, like, accessory buildings that are over.
Yeah, I get all that. I was saying the fences and walls are a little different.
Right. So what I'm generally hearing is that limiting the number of buildings is something that you don't have an issue with. It's all of those accessory structures that seem to be giving us heartburn. And we need to try to meet the goal of having Kevin and Mark say that they can enforce, but allowing people to enjoy their rear yards. So we will come back to that.
Do we talk about like a wall?
So that.
Two feet tall would be far, but it's never 16.
So we have fence standards and up to certain heights defined as a fence. Technically, you're not allowed to have a fence in the front yard, but you would have a retaining wall in the front yard. We'll go back to the drawing board.
You all agree with that as far as just coming back?
Yeah. We're all agreeing. Yeah. So as I said, we will try to limit the number of buildings, and we will try to come up with a way to deal with those accessory structures that we were talking about, fences, retaining walls, those kinds of.
We're asking, a hot tub, a structure, right?
Technically, it is, because it has location on the ground. Again, I'm just going to be really frank with you. This is only going to come into play when there's an enforcement problem.
Right. But now you're saying a hot tub, trampoline.
A ground pool.
A play.
But play equipment, play equipment is not specifically excluded.
Well, I know it's his play equipment, but I don't know, it's just getting, is a hot tub, I mean, isn't that more? I know.
Well, and I see what you're trying, I agree with what you're trying to do.
Yes.
But at the same time, that can also be used, it's in black and white, right?
Yes. We're going to try to find a different way of approaching and thread that needle.
Yeah.
And believe it or not, I mean, this happens in every community where we sit back and try to figure out how to thread that needle. So we'll come back to it. So today, air conditioning units must be set back five feet from the side and rear lot lines. During Phase Two, we suggested reducing this requirement to three feet, since it is sometimes difficult for homeowners to install their AC units in compliance with the five-foot requirement. After the Phase Two discussions, which generally felt, that I understood from y'all, that you wanted to keep the existing requirement, and that's what you see on the screen. So the Phase Three draft retains the existing requirements for air conditioning units. Anyone okay, everyone okay with that? Moving on to environmental regulations. This new section pulls together the existing hillside development controls and the existing tree conservation and restoration requirements into one new section. There were several changes discussed during Phase Two that we will discuss tonight. The purpose of the environmental regulations is to establish development standards to protect functions and values of our environmentally sensitive features, to protect unique and fragile and valuable elements of the environment, and to preserve and enhance the natural beauty of the landscape. In Phase Two, we discussed including a map of the parcels with slopes greater than 20% from the comp plan in order to aid the users of the UDO, and that has now been included in the zoning ordinance that you have at your place. Based on the discussions with the planning commission, we altered the applicability requirements for the hillside development controls so that the only projects that would be applicable to the hillside controls would be those parcels with slopes greater than 20%, 20% or greater, or have exposures of coke formations. That was the discussion that I understood it during Phase Two. Any concerns with this change? The existing tree conservation and restoration requirements were imported into the Phase Two and Phase Three drafts with only minor changes to update terms and zoning districts. These regulations work in concert with the requirements in Chapter ninety-eight of the general code of ordinances. Chapter ninety-eight establishes the tree commission and requires, except under certain circumstances, that forty percent or more of the aggregate diameter of inches identified as native trees on the property be retained on site, according to that directly. As drafted, the tree conservation and restoration requirements are applicable to major subdivisions and development plans that come to the planning commission. As you know, the city has a tree commission, and they've put out a recommendation to the planning commission that the planning commission approves or denies plans that are subject to these tree conservation and restoration requirements. The following requirements for all major subdivisions and development plans in any zoning district, they have to have the tree inventory plan in compliance with Chapter ninety-eight. They have to use protective tree barriers for all concerned trees. Utilities grading, access drives, and other similar site improvements should only be placed between the tree protected zones. Construction activities like material storage and concrete washout areas are not permitted in the tree protection zones, and a landscape plan has to be provided. In addition to the landscaping requirements in Section five point three, additional trees must be planted according to the zoning district that the site is in, and for example, the multifamily districts, one tree has to be planted for each unit approved.
Trying to keep up with you, but may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, there's five points two zero three, uh, and, uh, E, oh, excuse me, item H four, says plants, it's about plants, it says, plant the inventory, the approximate location, species, and size of all trees over eight inches ca- inches caliber that are located in an area to be affected by the development, and this is for hillside development. My question that I don't understand is, in your Chapter ninety-eight, you discuss a six-inch diameter tree, you know, for inventory and et cetera, but when we do hillside, we're using eight inch as a caliber. I'm not understanding why we would use different in the, the regulation than we do in the section here.
So we are referencing back to Chapter ninety-eight, but if that's existing languages and the general code, your question as to why one, one set of regulations uses six inches and another uses eight?
Yeah, no, I think, I, if I, I might have made, unless I misread, in Chapter ninety-eight, it looked like it said six inches in caliber for, for the plants? You know, and, and, and this statement here that we're putting in our ordinance says it has to be all sizes over eight inches. I'm not sure if that's oversight, or if that was a deliberate act.
I, I don't remember personally what that language is, we might have to go back and look at the ordinance that, that was passed separately from this, uh, and, and see if we can figure out the difference there.
Okay.
Because we, we just...
It was copy and paste.
It was a copy, we are, we are keeping your existing regulations, we didn't change that.
Sure, okay.
So if there was a conflict between your existing regulations today and Chapter ninety-eight, I didn't pick up on it.
I guess, okay.
Because our directions were to keep your existing regulations intact. So I will go back and look, and just see if there's a conflict.
May I ask another question on five point two?
Sure.
Five point two point oh four, on item two, where it talks about the billable area. It seems to me, I worked on some of these a couple decades ago, it seems like the bigger you delineated a billable area on your plan, the more trees you could cut down without having to justify that to the tree commission. Is that still the case, that, I think you're allowed, or you were allowed to cut down trees within the billable area, without having to go through the tree commission or ask for permission to do that? And it almost seemed counterintuitive, well, let's show the biggest billable area we can, so we don't have to survey as many trees, and we can cut down trees that we want to. Now, maybe we changed the verbiage since then, but, do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I wasn't aware that that, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'll say, for example, it's easy, the, the most recent development was over on Newman, the trees development, they did a tree inventory for the entire site. So they didn't really pull out the, the billable area and deduct that in any way. I, I, I might have to look at the language to make sure it's correct, or there's something...
Well, could you do that, could you talk on that? Because it almost seemed counterproductive.
I, I don't think that was the intent of, it's definitely not what they did when they did their tree evaluation, the number of tree evaluation. So, I, I don't think that's the intent.
Yeah, I worked on a couple of subdivisions, small, but it seemed at the time that, you know, we could delineate a billable area and not have to do the inventory in that area. Or we could cut down trees without, you know, having to...
I, I, let me just say, I don't think that's the intent, if it is somehow...
I know it's not the intent, I just want to make sure we aren't allowing that.
I got you there.
We'll check how billable, billable wire is defined.
And then one other question at five point two, again, is like, trees lost, is that just over a specific diameter of eight inches? Or is that, when you do your tree inventory, is that alters? You know, like, I mean, I could have one inch diameter tree, three inch, you know, whatever, I obviously, but, um, is there a, I'm just not sure, when you say trees lost, would that necessarily mean that that's specific to a, a size? I believe it is, but, um, just a question, I think.
I, I can look into that as well, I think the, um, I'll say that in my tenure, last year was the first one to be had, and that document that was provided by the arborist was reviewed by our tree commission in detail. So, um, they were probably looking at that a little bit closer than I was, as far as the numbers, um, and I can, I, I can give you some assurance or let you know one...
Sure, and, and the final question in this section, I guess, and I think it's five point two zero four, tree conservation and restoration requirements, one thing I did notice in there, maybe I missed it, was, and, and it is in your landscape discussion about, um, what do you call it? You know, making sure the trees live, you know, because what I noticed is a lot of times, these, these plants are approved, the tree is installed, and then you go there, like, you can walk along in front of the, you know, bank over here, where there used to be a tree, and the tree was dead for two or three years, is when I, when I first moved in here, and then it got, after during COVID, got cut down, and they put brick over it, right? So, my point is, is that, what happens over time is people kind of forget about it, it goes away. So, what, what's the, what's the, how are we gonna make sure the trees grow, and are replaced, and whatnot, for this particular section? I don't know if the landscape then covers that, or it has to be in this particular section.
So I think we could say that the landscape section does cover it, but I think we'd be better off if we added something to this section that either specifically states it, or references the fact that they have to thrive in Section five point.
Sure, yeah, so that anyone who plants has got to thrive, because even, you know...
Well, I guess the question, and we, I know we had some discussion in the past about that, but how long did, how long did it, I mean, is it reasonable to say for a year?
That's what I was just gonna add.
Because, you know, if the property has been subsequently sold, or you have a tenant, or whatever, that's maintaining the property, they would have no idea what the original commitment was like to order.
So, in, in terms of other communities, it varies from a year to three, depending upon what their priorities are. But it's usually, the shortest I've ever stayed is a year, and the longest I've ever stayed is three. Um, and that, if you have that language in there, it then gives Kevin and Mark the opportunity to go out and say, you have an obligation from the time, and it's, and it's the time period that you get your zoning compliance permit, is, is when the clock starts, is at that point. Um, so it has to live for a certain period of time.
So, I think for that time, do you, whoever has to put tree back in that place, or if you just...
Not after that time.
So then, but they, but they are, they have to always be in compliance with their development plan approval. So for example, if one, at One Highland, if all the trees between, you know, One Highland and Woodland died, they would be out of compliance with the development plan, and Mark and Kevin would then go out and cite them, and say, you have to be in compliance with your development plan, you have to go back yet.
I, I guess, your experience, how often do you do that?
Well, I'll say is that it hasn't been applicable in my experience, so, for example, once again, I use the, the one, one that I've been involved in, uh, over on Newman, they were well under the, the requirements, they didn't have to plant any trees. Now, they're putting trees in front yards, but they weren't obligated, because they didn't remove enough trees, um, so, you know, by calculation. Um, I will say that we were involved in a, at, at Casa, Villa Grande, uh, we were involved in a, um, I guess, a planting plan with the developer on that one, and we did go back, we were, we were involved with the, the plants, physically to get the trees physically planted, and to assure our one-year guarantee, we went back and checked to make sure that tree, those trees were still thriving after a year. So, I didn't go beyond a year, I'll, I'll be honest.
That's what I'm saying, beyond a year.
But I did go back before that time period was up and check, and those trees were still there.
Cool, county heads, I think, and ministers should actually do that, a year after the development plan, and they actually send letters, the owners say, I don't have any shrubs, the trees kept there. And, uh, and I don't think they issue us a final certificate, I think they only have a temporary zoning approval until that time. I'm not sure exactly what, how they get key in that, but they, they do check a year after the plan was...
So, some places will, they will usually issue a zoning, have to do with zoning compliance, but they may require a performance guarantee that's, that holds for a year, such that if the trees die within that period of time, they can replace them if, if that's necessary.
But beyond that?
But beyond that, the only thing that you would have, the only teeth you would have would be compliance with the development plan.
Right, which I don't think anybody ever ensures.
I'll say that I haven't, in those situations, I haven't gone beyond a year, and I, and I, that's the only one that I've, I've envisioned, you know, or been a part of. I'm, I'm trying to think of potential developments, you know, moving forward, and how that, you know, could impact us. You know, I, I don't know if beyond one year is, is asking too much of the staff to, to, you know, recall and remember, because you're, you're still involved in that. For one year, most developments, you're still gonna be involved in that in some capacity, so it, it's there, it's present. But beyond three years, you know, for example, Newman Development, it's gonna be done in two years, probably, and, and what we remember to go after, if it was a three-year period, to go back and check that.
And then does it...
I hope that's reasonable as well.
Then does it fall into the difficulty of property owner, the age of, who's responsible for maintaining the tree?
I'll, I'll say that Fort Thomas has passionate tree folks, and when trees are getting cut, we hear about it. And so, you know, that, that's kind of the failsafe, I guess, we'd say, um, we, we generally find out about, especially in the development situation. I can give you multiple examples, examples of that, including, um, both at Villa Grande, Hawthorne, where we have some green space preservation easements, where something's happened, and we hear, we hear about it from residents.
So, I can give you experience, living in, in, in Colorado, north of Colorado Springs and south of Denver, we're a high desert plain, right? And so, you know, they have the one-year performance guarantee, and I'll tell you, anything that lives in Colorado, you can keep it going for a year, add water to it, constantly water to live, but it hasn't established itself for a much longer time. We're in a much different, you know, ecosystem environment here, things will grow at a different timeframe. But what I did notice is that, and, and I was on a commission for twelve years, and what I noticed is all these plans would come through, and I knew what the plans were, and I'd always credit the body, because my, my thing was always about screening, and making sure that, you know, when you lived in over here, you'd have to look at that, what was being constructed, and how it looks, I knew that, I got very familiar with all the, you know, the landscaping design. And I'd go back after a year or two, driving around, because I live in the area, and I'd see, everything's dead after a year or two, because they stopped watering, that their responsibility was done, and they didn't have any more requirements at that time, so, you know, there's trees in the, in the middle of your islands that you decided to put there and make it so it's nice, and it breaks everything up with dead trees, you know, down there after the year, and that was because it was obviously a different scenario, right, a different environment, and if you didn't water, you needed to do it three years before the tree was truly established out there. Here, I assume it's less, but, my point is, is that, I've seen a number of times in, in past where that doesn't happen, and then you, you get this screening that you want, but it dies, and then no one looks for it, looks at it, and then, you know, you don't, you don't, you're not getting what you were sold, I guess, to begin with. So, that's the only reason I'm kind of focused on that, because I've seen it a number of times, you know, in that, in the, in the past, so. You, you know, however it's gonna work for the city, and however you wanna do it, that's fine, but I just, I just wanted to put that out there.
I think we do need to define the duration.
We'll do that, but again, keep in mind, in terms of being compliant, in compliance with development plan, that's going to be complaint driven, right? The person who lives behind them, and the screening has died, is gonna call the city, in which case then, they don't have to be worried about it until they get that complaint. But for the year, that would have to be their responsibility, so, yeah, we'll define that. Do you have any concerns about the tree conservation requirements only applying to major subdivisions, rather than all subdivisions? That was a discussion point that we had in Phase Two. And a major subdivision is anything that requires public improvements, water, sewer, roads. But, for example, if someone takes a lot and splits it, and they're gonna build a home on one of them, they would not be applicable, these tree conservation requirements would not be applicable to them, and that seemed to be where they wanted to land during Phase Two. So I'm just checking back in, make sure that's what you wanna do.
Now, one question, what about landmark trees, that was, is that, I mean, if they're a landmark tree on a property, then the tree commission would usurp this, under that regulation, or not?
Not, not very surprised with trees, uh, despite the fact that, even despite the fact that it's a landmark tree, it's still their tree, and they can still do what they want with that, you know, obviously, the ones in our parks are, you know, not, not being touched, but we, we have not been able to regulate that tree, you know, it's a private property.
Fair enough, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion about the environmental regulations? So at this time, we'll stop and take any community comments regarding the general use regulations, the temporary accessory use regulations, and the environmental regulations.
Does anybody have any, does anybody have any questions?
Sure. Just a quick comment slash question regarding...
Can you talk to my...
Sure. Uh, just a quick question, um, which is about what we were just literally talking about, your comment about if a landmark tree is on private part, property. Um, so I've lived in two cities in California, where landmark trees are protected, no matter where they are, and obviously, I don't know how they did that, but they did. And I have a friend, um, who's a retired environmental attorney in Connecticut, and I know he was involved in that kind of stuff, so clearly, it can be done, and given that we've lost a huge percentage of our old canopy trees, I would think it would behoove us to examine that, maybe somebody do some research, it's beyond my capabilities. But since it can be done, maybe we should look at that.
I'll be happy, you do it.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, just fundamentally, do we designate landmark trees on private property here?
We have some, yeah, we have a, and I'll be honest, it's a, um, it's, it's been quite some time since that survey was done, but there is a, is something out there in the ether. Uh, I'll say that I was informed that it was not enforceable, so I honestly really haven't grabbed a hold of it to see exactly where they are, and, and, you know, whatnot. So, so we, we would likely have to have, uh, and our tree commission is actually talking about this, um, one of the things they've been discussing is a, a tree survey, and we may have to get back to that point. Uh, it's my understanding, since I've been here, that there was a, a map of where everyone was, and that map is missing, uh, in action. Uh, it's located, it's listed, but it's not...
The font geographically.
Right, the font, so, so, uh, we may have to have another survey done, which we were actually talking about, there's some brands out there that we were looking into to, you know, provide some of this information, and perhaps we can add that to it. Uh, it was intended for our street trees, kind of a street inventory, but I think that would be something we can certainly consider. But with the list that we have, incorporate that into that, uh, survey.
Sorry, I just wanted to add that it's, um, having those trees and them protected was not, certainly in my experience, and I don't think really in anybody's, was a point of pride, to, to own one of those trees. And everyone was really proud of it, and in fact, when they would be listed, they would also often put that in the listing, and it included a landmark tree, and the whole city, you know, wanted to preserve these trees. I guess somebody could have not cared, but, as I said, publicly, it, it was something everybody got behind, and it was a point of pride, and we all liked doing that, and the large trees with the big boughs going... And the large trees with the big boughs going over the city, there were certain streets that were known for that. And you paid a price when you bought a home on that street. So I wanted to, can we look that as a positive, engaging thing for the community, not, not a negative, you know, over-controlling thing?
One comment I did have in the general use regulations that we were, kind of earlier, I wasn't tracking with you. Is we, we talk about vehicles being seven feet in height being an issue. And what we say is you can have a boat or trailer or recreation vehicle at 10 feet. And I know my Armada, when I put the topper on it, when we go up to Michigan, we've got to put a topper on it. I'm at, I'm close to, I think, 10 feet. You know what I mean by Armada? My, I think it's six inches shorter than your limitation and that's not lifted, which I know there's got to be trucks out there. And I've seen, what do you call them, some nice diesels that have been driving by and those are pretty tall. So my question is, you know, that seven-foot height on a vehicle, I'm not sure what that limitation is. Because, you know, my trailers, my trailers, my RV's 10 foot tall, why is my car have to be less than seven? So I wasn't sure what the benefit was of that. I just noted in that and I thought, well, the whole point is the unsightliness of it. So I figured I'd at least address that because that, to me, seems like it might be limiting for some folks.
Yeah, I think that was probably one of those that we didn't vet. It was in the language and it was kind of just transferred over. I'll, I'd have to say that traditionally, the ones that we would really get calls about were generally commercial-type vehicles. You know, those folks recognize that an individual person has a personal vehicle. And I've, I've never gotten a call, even for one that's been lifted. But I have gotten calls about oversized work vehicles and that's usually where it comes in. Or recreational vehicles parked on the street or something like that. So honestly, I've never really overly critiqued that particular number. We can certainly look at that or discuss it internally and see what traditionally we find. Maybe change the language to work vehicle versus private, personal vehicle. I don't know, but we can certainly give it its due diligence.
Sure, yeah. I guess my own thought is if you have a work vehicle that is a non, you know, maybe it doesn't look like work vehicle. And on your private lot, that's probably your own business, but if it's a labeled work vehicle or, you know, there's the construction step fans they have that are box doors. That's not the intent. Nobody wants to come home and have a tractor trailer next to their house and park it there. And I get it. But I just, that seven-foot just kind of caught me when I looked at it again. I'm looking at it for the first time in some respects, right?
Sure.
So anyways, that's just one, this is one point I wanted to bring up.
My, my guess is also that that is, this ordinance, the base ordinance, was done many years ago for the region. And my guess is that, that language is probably similar in other jurisdictions, but we can certainly check other jurisdictions and see, see what that average number is and try to come to a happy medium there.
And I understand why you have it. It's to control certain things. And so people are minding their own business and things are, you know, okay. It should be, you're not going to go out there and measure too many trucks plus the robbers.
So section 5.3 adds to the existing landscaping and screening regulations and the zoning ordinance and makes some changes to the existing lighting regulations. No major changes were made from phase two to phase three for the landscaping and screening. And phase three does contain some major changes to the lighting regulations, which we will talk about in a second. In terms of applicability, all new construction must comply with the regulations in the landscaping section. In case of existing sites, for minor changes, compliance is only required to the extent of the site alteration. For substantial renovations, the entire site must be brought into compliance to the maximum extent possible as determined by the planning commission. And a substantial alteration is defined as increasing the clear footage of the building or the parking lot or the land area by 33% or more. As with the tree conservation requirements, compliance with chapter 98 of the city's general ordinances is required and the landscaping plan has to be submitted. The existing regulations give the planning commission the authority to weigh the requirements for this section. There's also a provision that gives the planning commission the flexibility regarding the placement and arrangement of required landscaping elements. And again, as we talked about during phase two, that's largely because you've built out and we've reached a flexibility to deal with that. Moving on to screening and buffering, whenever development is proposed in a multifamily or mixed-use district. And this development of butts in R1 district, a buffer yard and screening is required. The screening has to be a solid visual screen. It is complete within one year of planting and the height of at least six feet at the time that it's planted. The screen has to be a plant, has to be a place of the occupancy of the, of the use. Unless a performance guarantee is provided due to weather or the availability of planning materials. The minimum width of the buffer yard is 12 feet and the screening materials can be a combination of evergreen shrubs and trees or solid ball or a fence with landscaping. In the phase two draft, we have that buffer yard as the minimum of 10 feet. And I've increased it in phase three to 12 feet in order to provide a greater width for the landscaping to thrive. Any concerns with that increase in the buffer yard? Much of the existing lighting regulations were retained. We did prohibit direct lighting in the sky, unobligated parcels. We prohibit light trespassing, flashing, scrolling, strobing, strobing, rotating and moving lights are also prohibited. And sign lighting has to be extinguished by 11:00 PM unless the store is open later. And we reduced the back of pole height from 41 feet to 30 feet. During phase three, we added a definition for correlated color temperature, which is basically a way of measuring the color of light. And this came about in our discussions during phase two. We also added a requirement that except for signs and outdoor areas, the maximum correlated color temperature permitted is 3,000 Kelvin. In general, lower temperatures are described as warm and tint or the colors of yellow and orange. In lighting, these are the color, correlated color temperatures of 2,700 K, 3,000 K, 3,500 K. As the temperature rises, the color moves into the white and blue spectrums. And we see this in terms of like 4,000 K or 5,000 K. The most stringent municipal ordinances require or permit a maximum correlated color temperature of somewhere of either 3,000 or 3,500 Kelvin. And provide the same extensions that we do, which are things like outdoor performance areas and sports venues. So this is a brand-new regulation. We talked about it during phase two, but this is how it's being drafted. Are you okay with including correlated color temperature and is 3,000 a light number? Or do you want to take it to 3,500? What are your concerns, comments on this?
How do you, how do you measure that?
There's a meter.
Is it?
Yeah, and, but it, but any light fixture that you get, any light bulb will have a Kelvin rating on it. So it's very easy.
One other question is, is there, I don't know about LEDs or different types of light bulb labels that are out there. I would assume it's common at 3,000 or, you know what I mean? In other words, you're not asking a developer to go find something that's.
Yeah, that's common. But again, you know, it, communities are all over the map in terms of what they're regulating. 3,000 is the most stringent that you're going to find. 3,500 is a little more common, but you will see some communities that go all the way up to 4,000 or 5,000, depending upon what their priorities are.
Is it really that discernible? Like when I'm sitting at a light, I can tell the difference between 3,500 and 4,000 or 3,000.
You can tell, look, if you go down, just for example, if you go down into the Krogers down here in Pavilion Parkway. Newport, you know, when they change up the light bulbs, they don't pay any attention to the light coming here. So you can tell every, not every single one, but you can tell the color variation through there. And those are probably from 3,500 to 4,500 or 5,000, just whether it's more bluish or more yellowish.
Very real light.
I, I guess, I'm okay with it. I mean, I think it's important to include it, but I, I would be okay with it going to 3,500 or 4,000 personally. The reason I said that is because, you know, the city's own lighting is not adhering to the 3,000 right now, I don't believe. So, you know, I, I'll give it a little more flexibility, but I definitely, you know, I, I, when I go past that infinity dealer around 75 and 48. You see all that purple lighting, it'd drive you crazy. So we don't want that, obviously. I mean, I'm okay with 4,000, but.
Yeah, blue light would trigger me. If you have to watch the NBA All-Star game and the stuff, was that All-Star game?
I did not.
They had, I don't know how many million LEDs up there. They could put fire on the floor, look, different areas for where they could shoot 4.6. Colors like crazy. You'll see if you watch basketball, dude, all of a sudden, you won't see the crowd across, because it's all blue light over there. You know, it's all different than the soda maker and the light was there. They can change it. Is this, if you had something lighting like a car lot, I don't know if the technology, if they wanted to, they could project on the surface their logo. And they could change it. As often, they could flash it, they could color it, they could do a lot of things with it.
Well, we are prohibiting the flashing and all of that.
I mean, this is just really intended for advertising.
This is just, I'm just saying, is this where we do it? Signs is where we do it? Is that a sign thing, you know? LED is open a whole new thing.
The flashing, the strobing, all of that is prohibited. And it would be in the lighting regulations where you do that. In terms of whether or not they would downcast their logo on the parking lot, that's an area that we have not regulated.
Or under the wall or the thing that could change the giant sign. Did that find the sign?
That would be in the sign one, if they lit up their wall as, you know, an infinity dealer or something like that.
I mean, down there at 471, the auto dealer, that's white light, that's LED, it was crazy. That's why you don't see one. That's all a car dealer did. And that's probably, if you have something next to something that brightens, it's hard to control. Keeping that from splashing your neighbor, I think. Like we all want, we all want to keep the light on the surface, what you're doing. The lighter it is, the harder it is, I think.
Right, I think, so Kevin, I think you made a good point. You know, is, is the city trying to go that direction to 3,000? Like that's their plan is to go wherever.
I mean, that's what we've traditionally been. So honestly, I'll be honest, I don't really critique that. I'll say that, you know, a lot of the new developments, you know, require equipment surveys and showing where lights cast out. And, you know, how that happens was required, was required here for most recent development. And so, you know, most of that is under control through, through those things.
What do you think Duke's doing for streetlights?
For berries.
So that's actually a, a big issue that is maybe for another day. We, we, we have concerns. We, we obviously as a city are interested in saving money by putting in, considering LED lighting for our street lighting. But we get so much negative feedback as soon as, when a light bulb is changed, a lot of times, due to certain reasons, they, they turn them to an LED light. And when they do that, the call, the calls start.
But it's, it's the wrong Kelvin temperature again.
You know, unfortunately, I don't know specifically, you know, what they put up there or what their regulations are.
I mean, that's what.
I just know that we get a lot of issues. So it's a challenge for us on if we want to move forward with that and consider that. And if we do, how we can regulate Duke to, you know, tone it down in some way. Because, like I said, you know, for me personally, if a light went bright in my front yard, I buy a blackout light. Unfortunately, in Fort Thomas, they call me.
You know, like down in front of Moyer, I think that's over that many. And at the high school, it's over. I'd like to know what, what their Kelvin temperature is for those lights and how many they have per, in your foot there.
Yeah, I've never like looked into it. I think, you know, I, I don't know if we get to the point that they're, they're, they're not regulated. You know, similarly to the signage. So I've never really, nobody's asked, you know, I've never really jumped in on.
If you got there and, you know, go out to Lowe's and buy a ball, I put them in there yellow. Do you like that look more natural? Or you can get to the white look, depends on what you're using it for.
I would think it's more foot candles and color. I know LEDs are just so much better.
Kind of bugs probably what they're complaining about, is it hurts the lookout, especially if you drive in such more contrast. These are kind of yellow to me.
Yeah.
They could be.
I mean, I guess, just the, the short of it is, I think we need to include it, but it's complicated.
Okay, so we're going to include it. We're going to increase it to 4,000.
It's a ballpark.
And, and we all understand that schools are exempt from that, so.
Although I think in the, in the public right of it, they're.
But they, they are, but the problem is that the light goes to your neighbor, okay? Down at Moyer, it's going across the, it's lighting up the front yards over there.
I've never received any complaints over there personally.
What's that?
Never received any complaints, so that's light on the back.
And we are prohibiting light trespass. We do have regulations about what the light level can be at the property line and all of that. And that's existing. Okay, so during phase two, we had quite a bit of conversation about outdoor light fixtures and when they should be turned off at night. To address some of the concerns expressed, we amended the subsection to permit outdoor light fixtures to remain on or undimmed until 11:00 PM. Only when it's specially permitted to do so by the planning commission. So what that does, adding this requirement gives the planning commission the opportunity to review the lighting plan. If necessary, receive professional guidance about the appropriateness of the proposed, of proposed light lighting. And I, I phrase it this way because we sort of couldn't come up with any rational way for how to deal with the situation when you want the lights to, to remain on after 11, but then you don't want them to remain on after 11. So I tried to thread that needle this way. Any concerns with how that's phrased? So essentially, if they want to leave their lights on after 11, they got to come to the commission and we.
Yeah, but that means my house right now is lit up every night as soon as it gets dark, all the way till the next morning when the light comes on in my house. It's not light for, what do you call it, for any type of safety or security. It's just to wash my house. But that sits there. I have lights, I go through all the columns and on the outside of the home. And it's not to illuminate the road, you know, any type of.
Architecture.
It's an architect, yeah. So you go to the house right next to Moyer, beautiful home. It's the same way. They have, you know, they have all the architect, it's architectural lighting.
Well, it says architectural lights are exempted.
Well, and I think this isn't for part of the development plan either. If you have an individual home with lighting, we have some separate lighting regulations that talk about adversity effect. And I think this is probably more geared toward, you know, development plan or you versus individual home.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. I apologize.
Well, I mean, you can make the same argument if you had a commercial, but again, if you wanted an architectural light.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I get, I get both sides of that argument.
You can't overdo it, I don't think.
Well, when it bothers the people next door that live next door, and that's where you go back to the point that you have the candle. Whether you measure the candle at certain distances from the property line, no, that's really helpful. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize this was true. Didn't include the residential.
Okay.
I mean, the only other thing I was going to say, like in parking areas, pedestrian lighting, the size things now, a lot of the lighting controls are measured in detective, detective control. And a lot of commercial entities don't want to expend money on electricity they don't have to use anyway. And so that, if there was a vehicle there, a pedestrian or somebody walking around, it would turn on and it would go off after 20 minutes or whatever.
What are they doing behind Mon Island up there in the parking lot?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I feel like it's on timer, but I.
We're on all the time.
Yeah, we've gone through, we got through screen, we put in, we spent a lot of time with Woodland folks and we got through the screen to where they deflect down more. They, they, the, the LED, I think in, in that situation, Woodland was sitting down a little bit, lower than the development. And they were looking out and they looked up and they physically saw that bright light. So we had some screening to kind of help deflect it down. Despite the fact that it wasn't putting out the foot candles beyond the footprint of the property, per regulation, it still had that, you know, kind of a glare. So we had some screening. I mean, we had several alterations and we, we got that.
But they're not turning them off at 11.
I guess not. Yeah, I didn't remember honestly on that.
They're not dimming them. So, they're not dimming them. LEDs you can dim, that's a neat thing about them, easily.
Yeah, I'm not sure the controls that we have there and if we, you know, should or shouldn't do that, I, I honestly don't have a...
These regulations aren't retroactive, right? I mean, they have what they have.
Right.
It's only new developments that have to follow these.
Try and get, be good neighbors.
And we had long conversations during phase two about the, the motion activated lights.
Yeah.
And some people felt like that was actually worse.
Right.
Than the lights being left on all the time, because it would just pop off. It would pop off, and there's no control of that. Um, and we had lots of discussions about, so, this was how I threaded the needle.
That's okay.
Okay.
It'd be a seventy.
No, it'd be the death.
Okay. Anything else about lighting before you move on?
Can we go back to landscaping for a minute?
Sure.
Do we have anything about species of plant material? White pines, you know, are really lousy for screening. You know, female ginkgos smell bad. Exactly, left up to the tree commission to review the species they use and make recommendations on that. Or, I know some places have tree lists that are approved, but that gets kind of cumbersome too. Do we have anything in here that, that talks about that?
There's nothing here, whether or not the tree commission has something, I don't know.
So, the tree commission, I'll, I'll say with Mon Island, we did, our tree commission did review the landscaping plan and had some comments about that. Um, and they were receptive to make good modifications. But as far as actual enforceable, you can't put in a white pine, you can't do this, I, I don't think there's any meat to that. I think it was just more of a, hey, this is our plan, it was a very responsible plan. Our tree commission, actually, our designer review board actually, um, pointed out a couple of things that, that they wanted corrected. It was actually more on the designer review board. Tree commission did not regulate the screening whatsoever. Um, but we have the experts on our, we, at the time, we had an expert on our, um, a landscape architect on our designer review board that caught a few things that need to be pointed out. Um, so, no, I don't, I don't think we can regulate the specific species overly.
You can choose to do that.
Okay, well, try.
There are certain things to do. So, we have, we are not currently doing that. Um, I mean, there are certain things you want to avoid, that's typically a better way of doing it, saying, you shall not use these, um, as opposed to having an approved plan list. Would you like me to suggest, um...
That's a good suggestion. I know Boone County has like a twelve page listing of, you know, large trees, small trees, and then they also have a list of ones they don't want to use.
I mean, white pines are good, but they grow fast and they don't really screen. You gotta put them in the right place, so maybe...
I mean, I, I think if we...
You gotta make sure you don't plant something that overages space like this.
To me, I mean, I think if we had a, a model plan, that, that would be something that looks like a tree commission over there.
Yes.
Are they evergreens or are they, you know?
Well, that's required, we have certain requirements in here about what type of tree it has to be for screening, the height it has to be, those, I mean, but we're talking evergreens, right? And we didn't say what species of evergreen, kind of say.
I think if we had a recommended plant list or a disbarred plant list, I think that should come from tree commission.
Yeah, I think that's certainly here, um, and we certainly can reach out.
I hope, but either way, I mean, I...
Yeah, we can, we, we can reach out. I, I know that we have certain planting lists for different areas, that, you know, medium, you know, native trees, you know, that they focus on native trees and small, medium, large type trees. We have the different type of lists. And they're actually maybe referenced to in our, in our landscaping plans, but I don't think it, like I said, has need to require. But I, I, I'd probably look at it and recommend it.
Can I, can I make one observation that I had? You know, one thing I might be helpful is, you know, anytime there's going to be an overhead utility that we may, or we help our citizens out and, or, or the development out, and that we don't plant trees that are actually going to grow into the utility. I was, I, I love the view along Highland when we first moved in, it was awesome, you know? Go down there, trees along the, the road look beautiful, and then all of a sudden Duke came through and like, and I'm just like, oh, that looks horrible. You know, that's not what anyone intended, but my, 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 my point to that matter is, unless they're, you know, the goal is most developments are going to have underground utilities, that's the point. But I'm, but I, I don't know how, if there's going to be any way we can affect, we're going to put new trees in where there are overhead utilities, that there's a...
I think we educate what, what gets this big and what doesn't.
Right, right, and maybe those tree commissions.
We, the commission does regulate that, we look at that ethically. Um, we actually aren't promoting currently trees in our rideways. We, we have front yard tree planting program, we try to get them back for a multitude of reasons, um, including buckling sidewalks, adversely affecting the street, getting in the wires. And when they, they certainly look at all those things, um, and, and are conscious of that.
And part of the reason the flexibility is listed in the landscaping section is for things like that. You know, if there's overhead lines here, yes, you're supposed to have it, but let's do it here because there are overhead lines. Or you can't plant here because there's an underground something or other. So, that's one of the reasons the flexibility is built into that section. So, we will now turn to the conditional use and restricted use regulations. There were no major changes from phase two to phase three, but we will spend a few minutes just reviewing some portions of this section. Because the organizing principle of foundation of all the conditional zoning districts is land use. Land uses are classified into different categories in each zoning district, whether it is a single family district or a commercial district. Permitted uses are always administratively allowed if the permitted use meets all the applicable requirements in zoning ordinance. Many municipalities say these uses are permitted by right. And so, for example, that would be a single family home and a single family residential district, that would be a by right use. A conditional use is a use that has unique impacts that requires special attention. And a conditional use is a use that is permitted subject to a compliance with a set of conditions and criteria that are in the zoning ordinance, and they have to be approval from the Board of Adjustments. As we previously discussed, we are also utilizing restricted uses, which fall between permitted and conditional uses. A restricted use is a permitted use by right, provided it complies with the specific use regulations in the code. And if it can't comply, it becomes a conditional use. And so, what this chapter does is list all the conditional uses, all the restricted uses, and then tells what those restrictions are. Given that we have decided that some uses require more care, section five point four establishes standards for those specific uses. In some cases, there are supplemental standards, in other cases, there are alternative standards to what's in the zoning district. And in some cases, they just deviate from the standards and they put them in zoning district. There are restricted uses and conditional uses in all of the zoning districts. And to remind you, we have seven single family districts, one two family district. We have two other districts, which are the river preservation and the conservation district. We have three business and mixed use districts that are outside of the single business district, and then there's all the traditional business district, Ranvannes, the Alexandria pipe mixed use district, and the neighborhood commercial office district. And then we have the central business district, which applies to downtown and Midway. Let's turn to the chart in section five point four, because these regulations, um, did you have a question? Okay. Um, because these regulations include all the zoning districts as both restricted and conditional, I've included this chart. Locution is a key component of the standards for restrictive and conditional uses. Please keep in mind, as I just said, that those restrictions are, that restricted uses are permitted by right with additional standards. The conditional uses all have to go into an adjustment for a discretionary reason. In this portion of the table, there are uses from agricultural to congregate care. In some cases, we retain your existing standards, such as the standards for agricultural uses in the R one A, A, and the river preservation and conservation districts. In the case of the congregate care facilities in the traditional business district, which is in Ranvannes, we require the uses only permitted in buildings that exist at the time the ordinance is adopted. And this inclusion signals that congregate care would be appropriate, re-use for an existing building in Ranvannes. For some uses, like daycare facilities and funeral homes, we retain the development standards that's in the current zoning ordinance, and we added to those standards to better fit these uses into the residential districts. For light manufacturing, which is a restricted use in the Alexandria pipe mixed use district, we require a larger than a lot area and increase the screening to buffer from adjacent residential. For several uses, like pleasure boat harbors and boat launching facilities and recreation dock facilities, those uses are currently conditional uses in the river preservation district, but no standards are in your current ordinance. So, we've added to those, and we have things like minimal lot areas that are increased as well as setbacks. We also included standards that regulate to ensure that the inside uses are better regulated, like prohibiting outdoor storage and required repairs must occur completely within a building. Two family dwellings are restricted uses in many residential districts, as well as in the residential subzoning districts in the central business district. And this restriction is that they must exist at the time when one is adopted. And with this restriction, the two family dwellings are conforming, so that no two family dwellings may be constructed. We conclude this table with the vehicle sales and rental facilities, these uses commercially is conditionally permitted in the neighborhood commercial and office district. As you may recall, we discussed previously allowing vehicle sales to be exempt from the minimum requirements in the neighborhood commercial district, which is front yard parking, and this is where we've done that. To allow it to have front yard parking, so we did that here, and that's an exception to what's in the neighborhood office commercial district. Any, yeah, I'll run through that very quickly, but any questions or comments about the conditional and restricted uses? Moving on to parking. In phase three, we added the subsections regarding general parking requirements, the design and layout of all street parking, and the access control regulations, and then loading and unloading regulations. These are essentially basically unchanged from your existing regulations, we just imported that for phase three. For the most part, the parking requirements have been reduced, as you can see by the slide of the screen. For example, the current parking requirements for professional office has to be one parking space for every three hundred square feet floor area. As drafted, professional office now must have only one parking space for two thousand square feet floor area. For retail and restaurant uses, parking has also been reduced. For example, right now, retail has to have one parking space for every three hundred square feet floor area, but as drafted, the nation changes to one parking space for every four hundred square feet. So, we are reducing the standards. The planning commission is authorized to make some waivers in the parking regulations. Today, you're allowed to waive them in the central business district and the traditional business district. That is continued in this draft as well. But for the parking located off-site for reuse, the planning commission may reduce the amount of parking that has to be onsite. So, off-site parking means, for example, you don't, you have enough land to put the parking where you are, so you lease spaces off-site. In this particular case, and the zoning ordinance does say a certain percentage of your parking has to be onsite. The planning commission's given the opportunity, or an applicant is given the opportunity to ask for a waiver, if they have left parking onsite and were off-site. The current ordinance permits the planning commission to grant waivers to the access control regulations and to the number of loading and unloaded spaces, and both of those waivers are incorporated into the phase three draft. Any comments, questions about parking, loading, access?
And then I now remember that we updated the specifics of the actual layout of parking in the development control or in, uh, section seven, I guess we have the southern bracket, that we use of the southern bracket, the design section.
Yes, we did, yeah. And as we said, the general regulations, we are referencing that, so it's very clear that they have to comply.
For the parkings, the, where do we have that?
Go ahead.
For parking spaces, at least minimum parking requirements? I hope, I hope I was tracking, did you say this just got pulled in from the last ordinance? Or, and, or are all these numbers currently, um, being imposed?
So, the, many of your existing regulations are pulled over, access, loading, all of those components. But we did, we, we did reduce the number of spaces for loading spaces. And that was a policy decision, because in many cases, you are overparking, right now.
Right.
You're requiring too many parking spaces.
Right, okay.
So, we are reducing them.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure I was tracking, because that was, yeah, it's a common thing that I've seen in the past as well, so, okay, thank you.
Now, I will point out that these are minimum standards, so that doesn't preclude someone from putting more. We have no maximum standards. All right, any comments from the community on landscaping, conditional use, and off-stream parking and loading?
You confirm that it's not retroactive? If, if this is all adopted, adopted, it's not going to be retroactive to existing conditions?
So, there are current lighting regulations in place.
Right. I'm talking about, oh, I should, um, landscaping and screening.
But for landscaping and screening, nothing is retroactive. So, if they have an approved development plan, they have to be in compliance with the development plan, but they do not have to meet the new standards.
It's just moving forward.
It's just moving, yeah. Wireless regulations, yay! Um, section, I'm sorry?
The control of electrons, I think.
Yes. Um, much of, um, section five point six is new for phase three, we did not discuss that in phase two at all. Much of the city's discretion for regulating wireless facilities has been preempted either by PRS one hundred or by federal regulation and rules. So, we're going to take a minute and define our terms. What you see on the screen are macro antenna structures, which are the cell tires that we are used to seeing since the advent of cells, cell phones. These are the big things. The tower on the left is a stealth tree monopole, it's meant to look like an evergreen tree. Um, the center photo is a stealth flagpole monopole. And then the one on the right is your traditional cell monopole that we, with no camouflage that we're used to seeing. So, these macro cell sites are effective for covering large geographic areas with relatively high capacity. Because the antennas are typically mounted on tall towers or rooftops of tall buildings and transmit radio frequency signals at high power levels, these are your, they're called macro cells. Okay, this is the new stuff. With the five G internet service on cell phones comes small cell wireless facilities. And these are actually, um, exactly, it's called small cells for two reasons. They are smaller in size and because the radius that they are able to serve is also much smaller. The antennas are typically deployed in things like you see here. Like, one's on that big light pole, the one next to the blue Subaru is, you know, a light pole that is stealth. These are these smaller, um, cell wireless facilities that are typically in the right of way, but don't happen. The pole or rail mounted equipment that can sometimes accompany those smaller ones that we see are about the size of a large refrigerator. Sometimes they're in the right of way, sometimes they're on private property. And just keep in mind that the small cell wireless facilities, um, stretch or complicate, or complement the micro cell. We need both in order to have five G. In terms of the traditional macro cell towers, the application requirements are set by PRS one hundred, you have no control over that. The application is evaluated by you and a public hearing is required. In this ordinance, there are draft standards that man, design standards that mandate monopoles or stealth or camouflaged, um, techniques of some sort. But keep in mind, that is camouflaged. The maximum...
I think it can go anywhere in the city?
So, that, the towers of residential districts, um, have to be in stealth. And those will have to be flagpole or unseeable to those kinds of things. But yes, they can go anywhere.
We're trying, we've got some on our water towers.
We've got some on the water tower out here.
Yeah, four seventy-one, we have a big one there behind the... Still nursing facility on Highland, I have a big one in that corridor.
There's two of them over there, right there off of Highland, right in that complex. Um, there's one here at City Building.
Yeah.
Ross River Water Tower, this water tower, um, there's, I'm sorry? Riggs has one, um, and then there's a couple that are close just outside of Port Thomas, I think over, uh, by the golf course. I get calls about once in a while, it's not within the city limits. Um, I think those are, I think that would stay, is it, golf course?
I'm interested, can we control where they want to put these things? One on the, on the, on the midway, I guess on the telephone building?
Oh, that is one, you're right, sorry.
They're mostly on utilities or city or whatever, but they want to put one in the middle of Highland Park, do they do? They're mostly on utilities or city or whatever, but they want to put one in the middle of Highland Park, do they do?
They would have to come before this board and request and ask if they want to put it doing it. Most of my requests, one hundred percent of my requests in my tenure have been, can we change out the antennas, upgrade equipment, et cetera? And, you know, my assumption is at this point, I don't want to say with certainty, that with the towers we have, we probably got coverage of Fort Thomas for the most part, for large cell towers. Now, like Elise was talking about, the smaller stuff that might not project the 5G is probably the more, you know.
And that's what's actually being ruled out now.
But could they put one on every telephone pole in the city?
The, the small cells?
Small.
Yes. You answered that question.
Saying we don't really want that.
You have no control of, you have no control of that.
Let's do it per view of what they want.
Well, I'm saying, you know, they're coming out, we don't think we can all put it.
You have no control of it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to get a feel for.
Why do we have a section in the planning, in the zoning ordinance?
So the macro, you have some, you have something we can control that.
Okay, well, it said something about the planning commission reviews them.
Yes.
I mean, on what basis do we review them?
So the all of that is.
And how do we turn them that, I mean, unless we have a bind in fact, it says on what basis we turn them there.
So you have evaluation.
In the middle of Highland Park, you came here, we'd say, maybe you want to put it in one of the sides.
But what if they didn't want?
So you do have evaluation criteria in here that that tell you how to evaluate the macro pole. That tell you how they, for example, the tower located in residential lot shall be located in a lot in location that will have the least impact on the natural setting and adjacent properties. You have some ability and it's all in here in terms of what you can control and how you evaluate it. I don't think you're going to give me more towers, but what you are going to get is this. And unfortunately, your ability to control that is slim to none. Again, the application requirements are set by PRS one hundred, that the applicant may decide to use the application requirements that are here. The other thing you need to be aware of is unlike the macro towers, all of these will be evaluated by zoning administrator. Unless it's going on an existing structure, an existing structure is a telephone pole, a church steeple, a building. If it's going on an existing, an existing structure of any sort, Kevin and Mark may never even know about it.
Right.
They just put it up.
Look at one, school chimney, right?
So if they, but I want to point out to you that if they are putting it in the right of way, whoever owns that right of way has to approve it. But again, you have little or no control over it if it is going on an existing structure. Kevin and Mark may never know about it.
We used to require permits, the last, last building apartment I worked in, if it was not a like-for-like change-up. I mean, lots of times they'd want to add one or add a bigger one, and we'd require at least an engineer, especially in some of the tall towers. If you're creating more of a resistance to wind or, or a bigger, heavier, heavier unit, you would require an engineer to sign up.
Absolutely, we, we, what, what could question, you may not know about it.
You may not know about it.
May not know about it looking like this, or may not know about looking like some horrendous, you know, kind of.
Appendage?
Yeah, right, exactly. So if it's going to be a horrendous appendage, do we have something to say about it? I mean, this I can see, it looks just like a light, you know, pole, you know, you know, street light, I'm fine with that. But I mean, like, an appendage on the side of a building or on the side of a church, it takes away from the historic structure of it, that doesn't seem like that's appropriate.
So it would have to go in front of the design review board if it's in the local historic district? If that's the only control you have. Otherwise, let's say they're going to put it on the side of one or other property.
I'm going to make the whole, well, could Fort Thomas be an entire historic district? Just a joke, just a joke.
So when the, when the SEC's regulations came out regarding the small cell in two thousand and eighteen, communities were up in arms. I mean, there were lawsuits and all sorts of things, and ultimately, we are here in twenty twenty-three and have very little control over it.
But if they want to go to a church and church wants to basically allow them to do it on their property, the top of their building or whatever, do they have a stronger case? They have an antenna there? Because that's, I remember St. Paul, we get the big atrium down there, they wanted to go on the backyard one time. You know, similar to what they got across two seventy-five there and the doctor's office that left there. Twenty by twenty and all the cabinets and that and the tall tower, that they would pay you something for.
Yeah, they can't force you to let them.
They would let you pay you forever, but I'm saying if they want, if somebody came in and wanted to do it because of economic reasons. It happens, I guess, whether we like it or not.
But differentiate between the macro cell towers and these small things.
Yeah.
You have some control over macro towers, you have little or no control over those.
Only the other.
Because for the most part, you don't have a development plan or a site plan, or it's not a stainless structure typically.
Correct, and that's one.
That's, that's.
That's the rationale of the SEC data. So, you know, the, the most control that you will have, for example, is if it's in the right of way or signage for Thomas. But if it's in the right of way, that's the transportation cabinet.
It's up to the city.
It's up to the management.
Can I put a sign on it?
What kind of sign?
Right up in there. Alltel, Alltel Incorporated Corporation, you can use my 5G, Verizon 5G, those kind of things.
You can't really do advertising, but if they had a logo on it, sure.
Is that a sign?
Can I start our advertisement name right? I, I like Kevin's thought, I think Fort Thomas, unless they come with some super different technology, we probably can cover. You know, I don't want to say with any certainty, but probably.
Right now.
And the small cells only have a radius of three hundred feet, something like that?
Three to five hundred. I mean, they're tiny, and so they're strung together, you know, they communicate with each other, and then they go to those things that look like a big refrigerator. And so you are, they are being proliferated all over. In most cases, when they look like this, you don't particularly notice it. So for the ones that are, you know, hanging off the light pole, you're paying attention to them.
But they can put the refrigerator things anywhere they want.
So those are, are, if they're going into the right of way, then you have some control.
With a prosecutor's degree.
Yeah.
But then the private property owner will then have to agree that it's on the private property.
Yeah.
And it still be classified as a structure at that point, but it's going on, that is not on an existing structure, right? That is not on an existing structure, it's evaluated by zoning administrator, it never comes here at all.
But that's the thing that they're going to charge in the end, Kevin, about, I don't like.
Yeah, that's another thing. I haven't had, you know, I think, my evaluation personally is, is more general utility boxes. I've had a few of those, and I have them misplaced in the center of somebody's front yard. It's like, no, this, this, find a good property line, you know, a good spot for them. And we, we kind of work with homeowners and utility companies and usually don't have a problem. At least at this point.
Free still, provide interesting stuff.
It is a little hard to take, isn't it?
Yeah, when you don't have control of it.
All right, so it is eight thirty, we want to move on to signs, so we won't delay signs until April meeting.
We, we had some folks here talk about signs, so.
I'm happy to talk about signs.
All right.
I'm Ron Sinclair, the pastor at First Christian Church in Fort Thomas, right next to Woodfield School. I know that you have a letter in your possession and you now know, I think, what our non-issues are. Of course, we're thinking about updating our current sign with an electronic sign, but the non-issue is it's not in an historic district of Fort Thomas, and it's not a new space we would be utilizing. It's an improvement on our current space, we'll be using the frame of our current sign. And we've decided we will not overstep your permission simply because there is no prohibition. Though we in jest suggested that it was easier to ask for forgiveness and permission. We decided not to go that route.
Good.
Here are a few issues that we continue to work with, we would like to have your permission to move forward, and we know that that means an obligation on your part that you will have to develop your policy and your guidelines, and we will seek to abide by the same. The reason is, is it all pressing to us is that we desire to have this sign in place before our upcoming centennial year, which is twenty twenty-five. And so we have as many as seven, perhaps eight fair weather months with which to accomplish this task, unless you've overheard anybody from greater Cincinnati and northern Kentucky, you know, there is no guarantee of fair weather months, but we have some confidence. Of course, if this is approved, we'll have to reacquaint ourselves with the contractors we spoke with some months back and set a date to do this work. We'll also have to remind our members that we've had this discussion about the sign, which began for us in twenty twenty-two. We thought it was a good idea back then, and we hope it will be in the minds of our members now. And I'll be honest, I wondered if we have enough time to accomplish this before twenty twenty-five, but of course, we will have enough time because this is a leap year. So the question before us is, do you have other concerns for us? Things that you need to address to us, things that we need to take back to our church? Do you need to clarify some aspects of this process for us? And I know that you're in the process of putting together policies. You may even have questions for me tonight, please ask. I may have an answer, but if I don't, I'll take it back to our church board and we'll treat those questions seriously. We do look forward to hearing from you in any event after tonight's meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions at this time for us?
I'm just curious, what's the round number of dollars for the building?
We've gotten various quotes, and I think we referred something as low as thirteen, fourteen thousand, maybe more. Now, because it's been some months and any quote that we had given to us has lapsed by now, so it may be a little more than that.
You're, you're aware when we did the discussion on signs the last time?
Yeah.
Your discussion, that all the people that have electronic signs are really not within our preview. Schools, libraries.
YMCA.
YMCA. And the discussion then, the main fundamental thing is, do we, if we allow churches to do it, can we prohibit businesses from doing it? If we allow both to do it, are we going to have LED type chain sign from one end of the city to the other?
And then we'd look like the Las Vegas Strip.
That, that was the biggest thing back five years ago, whenever it's.
We're still trying to model discretion. And of course, we're just a few hundred feet from a rather large sign at Woodfield School, ours would be much smaller.
But that's, that's it, and then there was a, there was a discussion internally, lit or light onto the sign that you gave. You know, a wood grain sign or whatever, and a projection light onto it for the evening time. So those are the kind of things we wrestle with. And we still going to wrestle with that, I think.
And we're wrestling on our side with, you know, the thing we need most is not approval, what we need most is yes or no. You know? Once we have a clear yes, we move forward, if we have a clear no, we know we can move on to other things.
I mean, right now, you know, you can't.
Yeah. But.
Until we change this sign.
Or prohibition, we, we want permission.
Yeah, everybody wants it, I guess, you know, I've read your letter and that about, will it really make a difference? I always wonder that, you know, church type along to St. Paul, same thing, they would want that kind of changing sign.
Yeah.
Is it really going to impact anything?
Yeah, the impact we think it would have right now is that we've spent, invested considerable funds in this past year improving the inside of our building, we've begun to make some outside improvements. And our sign looks like it's state-of-the-art nineteen fifty-five. Our film, I, by the way, state-of-the-art nineteen fifty-five. And as you can see, I'm not as young as I used to be. We want to update that sign eventually, even with the conventional sign that we have. Then we will have to repair, replace, and update that, we just thought this would be a better move.
Because I always wondered with social media, you know, all the things that get advertised there. And you want your parishioners to know what's going on, you know, that's the main thing this whole thing is.
Yeah, and promote some goodwill in the community. I can only give one example when our current sign actually seemed, well, okay, two examples, when our current sign seems to have had an impact. We tried various standard procedures for replacing our former administrator's secretary, nothing seemed to be working. And then we put it on our church sign and received about twenty inquiries. And at least indirectly, our current administrator's secretary came to us through that sign. The other thing, and if you passed by our church, you would have seen this, is that we just, in the interim of this limbo situation with our sign, decided to just say, God loves you, Mary. God love you, Marvin, and we have had a few people stop, get out of their car and take a picture next to their name. We think we can improve that ever more.
Well, those are random, random names, you're saying?
Yeah, well, actually, they're names of our church members.
That's what I thought.
But, but we've also, you know, there are a lot of people involved.
Yeah.
We're counting on it.
Any other comment, did you? I guess the question I'd have is, as far as operationally, we, if you were to get permission, would you be able to operate within the constraints of timeframe, like, you know, evening, it would shut off? In other words, would that system not operate during the night, you know, late evening, early morning, like after eleven or four seconds?
I don't think there would be a problem putting a timer on that, but we'll know better what the parameters are when you give them to us, and then we will honor that.
I mean, I guess, following, following upon his question there, have you, have you looked at the current regulations for the electronic sign? Are you familiar with what they are?
For this area?
For Fort Thomas, yeah.
No, I'm not familiar. So if I can.
Go ahead.
I have looked through this, and there are some questions, and let me just back up real quick. Many of the vendors that we have looked at, it's been almost a year now, do have a program that would be on the computer and on our mobile devices where we can change the messages, dammit. And there is likely a timer on that as well, so that's not an issue. I have looked through it, and I think there are some, I need to have, and I'm not sure honestly, Kevin, if it's something that I would work with you on, or it's something we do internally, but to make sure that we can abide by the measurements that are in there, because technically, we are in the MCO district, so we would qualify, from the way I read it, for a sign in that location. I do know that our current cabinet would fit the requirements.
I'll also say that your, your sign that you have is likely compliant if you stick one in there, if we decide, if the planning commission decides to move forward with that. I'll also say that most of your signing companies are aware of any additional regulations that we might put on those, such as, you know, the, the intensity and the, the flickering, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, so there's really, in all likelihood, not an issue with that. The issue is solely the concept, do we want these or do we not want them? Do we want these, or do we not want them? And can, how can, you know, Lisa maybe guide us? How can we regulate them in any other way? And, and, and that's the big picture. The other stuff is, is easy.
Can I ask a question? When the Young Men's Christian Association obtained their lighted sign, how did, how did they get that? Are they outside of Fort Thomas?
No, they are in Fort Thomas. Honestly, I don't know. I don't know if that's considered, I'll be honest, it was before my time, so I've never really been into that. I don't know what it's like.
Don't we have a precedence right there then? I mean, every school has one, the city has one.
Well, the public entities, so public entities are exempt.
Public entity?
Public entities. The schools that are public entities are exempt.
So YMCA is a public entity?
Honestly, I don't, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna speak to the YMCA.
I mean, YMCA is just the same as this church or any other church as far as that organization.
We should not.
We might have made a mistake when we approved the one for St. Thomas, but that was actually for the school.
Right.
Because the public schools were allowed to have them, and we didn't see that as being fair for the parochial school not to have one. But people see that, and they think, oh, that church has a sign. And our intent was not to have, like you said, the Las Vegas strip of church signs, which you could have going along the avenue.
In terms of, from St. Catherine's, all of it, or Phil.
Yeah, yeah, not really.
I would.
That's okay. I mean, the sign, a sign isn't a problem. It was the illuminated LED sign that was, yeah.
Yeah, so let's.
In fact, we can't really, once we approve one, we can't.
If you read our sign, the size, the shape, the location, mountain on a building, non-alien building, all gets into this discussion.
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah, so your current regulations, so actually, y'all are actually zoned R1C, which is a residential district, which is what we're going to be talking about. All of those types of signs in residential districts. Your current regulations regarding electronic message centers were adopted in 2017. And currently, public or parochial schools in residential districts may have electronic message signs. So again, we don't know how the law got it. As we've said, many times, the schools are exempt from zoning regulations. Therefore, whether or not, no matter what we do, you're gonna continue to be able to have these electronic message centers. The sides are limited to forty square feet per side, ten feet in height. And the current regulations say they can only be lit between six and eleven. They can't glare onto adjacent residential properties. They have to step five feet back from the property lines. Have the landscape, any malfunctions have to be fixed within twenty hours. And only seventy-five percent of the permitted sign may be digital. That's your current regulation. The minimum, the whole time, is ten seconds with no movement, and the maximum brightness is twelve-foot candles. In phase two, we proposed permitting electronic message centers for all community facilities and institutions. So that includes places of worship, parks, schools, and daycare centers.
And what?
I can't hit you because I'm on camera. In phase two, we retained most of those existing regulations, but we did further restrict the movement of displays, and we prohibited audio devices on these EMCs as well. Now, phase three, and that's what we're here to discuss right now. We are proposing that the electronic message centers will be conditional uses, which means they would come in from a board of adjustment. We changed the operating time from 6:00 AM to 9:30 in the middle of eleven. And we expressly prohibited anybody who has a non-conforming, freestanding sign from converting to an electronic message center. And then we authorized the board of adjustment with the conditional use to reduce the hours of operation for compatibility's sake. All right, so we have precisely this conversation about if you open it up to all community facilities, the big issue is the avenue. Like, how many are there going to be on the avenue? So keeping in mind that you would be allowed to have one sign per lot, and it would be for all community facilities, and so we created this exhibit. And so, it's up on the screen, but it's way too small for you to see. So, you know, basically, there are clusters. And this actually goes from Johnson Elementary all the way down to Alexandria. So there are clusters. There's a cluster of the schools, you know, the middle school, there's, and the high school. Across the street from that is a church. If we, if you adopt these regulations, you could potentially have a cluster there. As you move further south down the avenue, there's another cluster where the post office is, the church is there. And so if you keep going further south, I think it'd be helpful if y'all just sort of pass this around. Yeah, so, or maybe I can know that.
You won't be standing there while we're in the trash?
Yeah, why don't you stand there? I don't know.
This doesn't go all the way to Johnson.
Yes, oh, sorry, it doesn't go all the way to Johnson. Where do we go? Because we didn't go that far because it just went that way up there. We went to.
High school.
High school.
No, high school, middle school.
High school and middle school, all the way down to Alexandria Pike. So as I said, there's that cluster there. Then you have the City Hall building. You have the actual school board there as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, City Hall School.
School building. Then we move down to the post office and the church across, and daycare and the church across the street. And then you move further south, there's the churches down here.
Right now, in speed.
I know, I, I looked at, oh, sorry.
And then there really are, you know, there are sporadic clusters. At St. Thomas, and then there are sporadic sites and you get down to Alexandria Pike. So essentially, you could be looking at about three separate locations when you could have several in one spot. So the question becomes, you opened the door in 2017 to schools and parochial schools. Do we continue to open the door to all community facilities? Or do we want to limit them to community, to some sort of community facilities? Churches or whatever else? By opening the door for parochial schools, you somewhat already opened the door for churches. And if you aren't, if you are not, if you don't want to continue that, to have that door open, I would say you need to close it and just say, "No one can do it." And then the schools will just continue to do so. But you're not treating everyone fairly if you are only limited for little schools and not allowed churches.
The challenge with that is that St. Thomas doesn't use it at its school sign.
That's correct.
They use it for that.
They use it for that.
They use it for that.
But you could, we could tell them, hey, make a school burning back off on the church.
But can't you tell them, you're not allowed to tell them what they can write on it?
Well, we could tell them that's why they're not supposed to write the habit. It's a school sign, not a church sign.
You can't control the sign.
You could suggest.
We already had that conversation already because you can write AKU one on it. That's correct.
Can I do another point?
Well, I'm sure the city would say something about that.
Can I give you another perspective? You know, my wife does a lot of advertisement, like marketing and advertising, right? Like, from, through different organizations, we'll say, right? And so, you know, every one of these signs you put out front, those places that they change and print out, between seventy and a hundred dollars. Not, not only including the, you know, the time to make the sign, that's not included in the price, you know, by the person designing it. Also, the, you know, the, the cost to organize and manage it and get it, and then actually get it produced and get it there. There's a lot of time, effort, and energy going into those signs. Which, what I like about this, and let's forgive me, I, I see this as these churches and even a community center. I don't like the idea of having a daycare, but churches and community centers, it will give them the opportunity to put their message out there, like we've heard before, and provide that message. And we can't really control the message, right? That's for them. But I think it does provide them the opportunity to communicate with the community and provide that, you know, extra level of service. And I live right in front of the Methodist Church here. I know they always have a sign out front that they have for, you know, different activities that they do. And I would love for them, and I'm not a member of that, but I would love for them to be able to have that opportunity if they needed it, to, to have the sign. And I, and I would be affected by it because outside my front step, I mean, I live right across, I mean, I'll look right at it when I walk out the door. But I, but I would still like them to have the opportunity to be able to provide that, whatever message they need to submit to the community. And I think one thing that they do is, you know, not only other activities, you know, like, hey, come up for this particular event or that particular event. And it may be something that serves a church or maybe something that serves a community. So I think it's an excellent opportunity to be able to provide these. And I really don't see them being a large concern because we have the constraints on that we, we would put there. And I would also suggest that there are quite a few there, but I think if you narrow it to say, these are the type of uses, such as a community center or a, you know, religious facility, a place of worship, could do this, and that's fine. And I think you, to me, quite honestly, you've, you've already opened the door. YMCA already has that. And you, the parochial, you know, school for the Catholic church, you know, Catholic church community, already has it as well. And then we have the school and obviously the community itself. So I don't want this place to become Las Vegas. I hate lighted signs in many respects, but I do see an advantage to it for these small organizations that because of the cost to be able to put up a new sign, they can do it electronically. And, and you, and you would find that at my last location, I was very adamantly against them. I don't like them lit at night. I don't like them moving. However, I do think there's some advantage here. And that's just my feelings on this and one of many.
But you're saying eliminate, don't allow, like, one high on those, all of those places to have one or on the other side of the street?
No, no, just, just the specific use.
It's not for the church purposes.
Yeah, because it's, because it's a community purpose. It's not about somebody trying to make money. It's, it's about bringing people together and serving the community. That's what I, that's my, my opinion. So, and I'll just leave it at that, please.
I agree with that.
I do not. I don't think we need them. There's too many, all the way on North Fort Thomas and South Fort Thomas. Too many locations. That's gonna take away the look of our historic town, which we're trying to preserve. It would look like a little bit Las Vegas or Mama Street. And that is not what we want here. So I'm against it. Completely.
I thought we already had this discussion.
Yep.
I'm surprised you seem to not be yet there.
Well, we're revising what we did five years ago. I'm, I'm opposed to it too because I think it gets out of control.
Correct.
If you get the churches in, well, then you get pressure to put it, everyone.
I was curious, I mean, this is something that we, I, I don't know that we've discussed with council. Is council waiting on expressing any opinions about this topic?
They have not, no. We certainly can bring it for them.
I guess I agree with both of you guys. I agree with your position that I, I think it's a valuable context in a non-commercial way. I also think that if it was up to me, I would have not allowed the YMCA or St. Thomas to have the sign. But that precedent is already kind of out there at this point. And I think from an equity standpoint, it's hard to make that justification of saying, well, they were in, but tough luck moving forward. But I would also be interested in to see, I think this is one of those kind of, I mean, I don't think there's necessarily a black and white answer to this. And I, and my personal opinion is I would like maybe to get the input from council to get some direction. And I guess I, I'm undecided. I could, I could go either way with it, honestly. I'm, I'm not strongly advocating one way or the other, but I, I could see both sides of that already.
So to get the one at St. Thomas, this commission and council approved that?
We approved it.
You did.
Yes, we, we approved the language to allow it as conditional use for that, you know, for that. I, once again, YMCA before me, I don't know exactly how.
That would be sometime. It was sometime between October 2009 and November 2012.
Based on that, okay. Because that was before my tenure. I don't know exactly when that, I don't remember.
Could we, could we make changes in different zones or different? Because that is a different zone over there. Could we allow it to join Alexandria Pike and not anywhere else on North Fort Thomas or South Fort Thomas? I'll be allowed to do that.
Yes, you'll allow it to do that. So again, we're talking about residential. These are the EMCs and the residential zones because that's where all of your community facilities are. But yes, and, and you, I think you suggested that previously, like, perhaps you could allow them, you could have a location which would be along US 27.
Right. Because there's a lot of businesses there that, or was, could be.
Yeah, you certainly could do that.
Would, would you allow, allow businesses there? Or do you deal with the churches?
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, we're talking, right now, we're focusing our conversation on, on the residential, non-residential use in the residential districts, which are all community facilities.
Yeah, I would not allow it for commercial, no.
No, okay. But what I was, my thought process is, is because we're trying to make the center of town all, and that's the main street. North, South Fort Thomas and South Fort Thomas. Look, look comforting, look enjoyable, look like more, like attractive to people to come here. That's what we're trying to do. That's our whole ultimate plan here.
It can also be distracting.
It can be.
Driving.
Yes.
Just one more discussion.
I would agree, but if my, if you look right across, you know, with walking the door here, and the city has one. Like, well, we disagreed with what the city did, and the city has it themselves. So I mean, it's, I mean, there's no other purpose than it was convenient for you and it was easy to do, right?
But what we're trying to do here is move forward from the mistakes that were in the past to move forward. So we've got several mistakes that we're trying to, to correct. That's what our plan is here.
Right, so two, sorry.
Yeah.
So two questions. Can we actually put, you know, if, if, what do you call it? YMCA has to fix their sign. Can we say, you can't do that, you're not approved? Same thing with the parochial school. Your sign breaks, no longer approved. You don't try to say like.
It's huge.
You can't back up on that.
Okay, just by.
When we did the sign update, I mean, this one, I mean, size is also.
Type?
Size and building, how many? I mean, it's a big issue. And, you know, we refer to what Merrimont looks like a lot in some other community up in Ohio. It's kind of got that feel, but about.
Lighted signs.
Yeah, you know, lighted signs, wood, wood, waterblasted type, you know, that kind of look to it.
Yeah. We did require at St. Thomas, the school sign to be in front of the school. If they had wanted to put that in front of the church.
Yeah.
No, we wouldn't have done that.
Because the other schools had it.
Well, that's gonna be tough for Kevin. Well, when, if we allow a sign in a commercial zone for a church, you know, that's just, everyone's gonna want to get one. He's gonna have to try and explain zoning to the people that don't really understand it.
Right, but again, the community facilities, no matter where they're located, are all zoned some sort of residential. They're, you know, R1C. So you, and you, and just to be clear about this, you already permit digital signs in some situations on commercial lots. And we can talk about that in one minute. But for all the community facilities, they're all zoned residential. Which is why we're having this discussion in terms of residential.
Continue.
Well, I guess my suggestion would be, in the interest of time somewhat, is, I think this is a topic that's very important discussion, actually. I might say this, we table it for now. Get some input from council in one of the future work sessions with them and revisit it again.
Yeah, so let me ask this question. So let me ask this question. Do you, what do you think of it being a conditional use?
Well, I think it would be a conditional use.
So you're happy with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that changed?
I think it would be conditional use, if we would allow it, it would be conditional use.
I think it makes a fair amount of sense to allow, to make someone go in front of the neighborhood and make their case, and if there are, you know, if there are reasonable conditions that would be allowed.
And the neighbors have the opportunity to waste their.
And the neighbors have, yes. Okay, all right.
In some ways, it's a sentiment to me, you just can't have a junkyard in the middle of the city. You're better if you say, thou shall not have. Don't give it any help. But that's probably the most important thing.
Unless you're already having a junkyard in your city, and the next guy is saying, what about mine?
We need your eye down the middle of the city. That's the thing of the common. It's just like when we took the poles out of the middle of Fort Thomas, they haven't been.
I know.
Everybody loved that. They still love it.
It's for the people.
And they'd like it to stand out all the way through town because it's the look that makes us unique.
All right, we want to continue the sign discussion or get the rest of this?
Well, you had a few comments to keep going, didn't you? That's what I was. Cindy, shuffle your part.
No, no, I mean, we're, in terms of the electronic message centers, I think we're not, but we still have a few other sign topics that are probably going to take, it is non-hog.
It'll take some time, which is.
Yeah, it's going to take some time.
I think we've reached the end.
I think we did, yeah.
So for the, the sign regulations we discussed, and we will try to get some conversations with council about electronic message centers.
Well, again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So we will come back together in March for the, that Tuesday and Wednesday to talk about residential districts. And thank y'all very much.